Continuous Learning Plan Update: Future Ready Return Fall 2020. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of the processes that have been established to prepare for future-ready return. The Future Ready Return Plan will launch in the fall of 2020 and will focus on reentry and return of continuous learning experiences for students and staff. Today's presentation will include key feedback from staff and families and an outline of the procedures in place for planning. This presentation is for the board's information.
Welcome Tiffany. We're glad to have you here.
Good afternoon. This is Tiffany Irving and I thank you for this opportunity to be here this afternoon to be able to share with you updates regarding our Future Ready Return to School Plan. I'm not quite sure how to bring it up. It's coming. Okay, there it is. And so as you can imagine, we have a lot to share with you this afternoon. I plan to share highlights of both our parent and our staff survey as their input pertains to the 2021 academic school year. Also, it is the 150th year of public education in Wichita, so look forward to in the future updates on ways we will be celebrating that. But today, we're going to take a look at our team's planning priorities, then look at the framework that we will share our plan within. Before we begin, I do want to remind you that while I will be presenting our framework today, what I will not be doing is presenting the final plan. Our final plan will be forthcoming in mid-July and at that time, we'll be able to share all the details and answer all the questions that I know everyone will have in order to be able to launch our fall return to school. But today, I'm going to touch base on the timeline that will guide the completion of our work. And so as you may recall, parent feedback was invited at the end of the school year. I shared a couple of those highlights with you during my last presentation reflecting on our continuous learning experience last spring. I want to share a couple of highlights with you now reflecting the parents' outlook. First, a reminder that we had more than 3,400 parent respondents representing more than 6,300 of our students. Most feedback was submitted online, but we also invited parents to submit via paper surveys that were distributed at our food distribution sites when we served lunch during our continuous learning during the spring. The third level of distribution, I'm sorry, the grade level distribution of our respondents was similar to our general student population. We were pleased with the number of surveys collected, but disappointed that we didn't hear from the same group of families whose families weren't represented in continuous learning this spring, meaning those who did not have access to technology. This is yet another reminder that we must overcome our digital divide that some of our families face within our community. So 70% of our parents and caregivers have at least one provider that works outside of the home. That's with 30% having one caregiver outside of the home and 40% having all providers working outside of the home. We see that the impact in parent response to the question of how they prefer for children to attend school this fall, assuming appropriate safety measures are in place. 53% of our parents indicated they want kids back in school. 32% support some type of hybrid or blended approach, as you can see in red, with that pink slice representing 9% of our parents who favored this option only if we are able to provide a device that also has connectivity. And then finally, 15% of our parents were interested in online instruction, including 5% as highlighted in the light green, who would favor this option if devices were provided. So if more of our parents without access to technology were able to participate in this feedback opportunity, I'm certain those lightly green or those lightly shaded areas indicating dependence on some type of technology device would be significantly higher. So we gave parents the opportunity to express preference for any four of the scenarios presented around what a hybrid or blended approach could look like. And so these four scenarios were being evaluated during the time that this survey was administered to our families because it's important, we want to receive their feedback so we have some idea of what we might need to consider if we need to pivot at any time to a hybrid approach to learning. So these scenarios that we have listed here, we found were very similar to other scenarios that other districts across the nation are also considering at this time. Parents could choose one, two, three, or all four of these scenarios. And so as you can see, there is a clear preference for two of those scenarios. One of those scenarios, the top dark blue bar here, shows 50% support, focus on students being spread out, half of the class attending in the morning, and then the other half of our student population attending in the afternoon, with the alternating half-day part featuring some type of online instruction that we would provide for students to complete while they are at home. What we know based on our additional work and study within our work groups that according to our transportation leaders, this half-day scenario, half in the morning, half in the afternoon, would be nearly impossible for us to execute based upon the demands of our transportation system. But we felt it was important to share this full picture of our data, but also to let our stakeholders know that we are carefully reviewing each scenario and considering what it could look like for us within a hybrid environment. Then, this graphic here will look somewhat familiar to you because it was shared at our last report and it has been important and informing our thinking. We asked parents, how can we best help you and your child engage in going forward with online learning again, if we needed to implement this particular scenario? And so parents told us overwhelmingly that they wanted to maintain a consistent class schedule. So as you can see, the second most important aspect here is in green, that parents need for us to provide computer devices and internet connectivity for students to be able to use at home. Least important was taking attendance, but parents do want us to grade student work. And digging further into the aqua color section, other ideas, many parents said either all three or some combination of the elements called out specifically. But the bottom line is that we have to be ready to maintain consistency, accountability, and connectivity regardless of the learning environment for this fall. Our staff data is being reported here for the first time as we just closed that feedback collection last night at 10:00 PM. We had an extraordinary participation rate, nearly 60% of our entire staff population provided feedback. As you can see on this chart, our largest group responding is our classroom teachers. We received feedback from nearly 2,700 classroom teachers plus an additional 1,300 respondents who identified themselves as in other certified positions. Additionally, we had almost 1,300 classified employees, 28 security officers, and 154 administrators who shared their feedback. Also, as you might expect, 90% of our respondents are from a school environment. This extraordinary response tells me two things. One, that our employees care deeply about the choices that we make for learning this fall. And two, this data will serve us well for decisions that we will need to make moving You may recall that we asked our parents how they prefer for their children to attend school this fall. 53% of them said they prefer for their children to return to the physical school environment in the fall, with another 32% expressing preference for a hybrid model. We asked a similar question of our staff, but wanted to get a staff pulse on each of these three scenarios and the level of acceptance by our staff. 86% of our staff would support a plan to get students back to school physically if adequate safety precautions were in place. Staff expressed similar preference for a hybrid model. Where we see the real difference is in the pulse for online learning. Less than half of our staff members would support the online-only option. When we asked about acceptable possibilities for a hybrid experience, if public health causes us to pivot, staff preference mirrors our parent opinion. Right at half of our staff support the half-day shift concept, but staff expressed a substantially higher favor towards the alternating days of the week model. As we continue to work through the possibilities of each model, we anticipate digging a little deeper and asking stakeholders several additional questions between now and when we share our final plan in mid-July. Staff were asked to rate their level of comfort on a scale of one to five concerning their return to work. As you can see, our staff is ready to return to work. One other thing to address before I present our planning framework, we've had thousands of comments shared by our parents and our staff. We are in the process of reviewing all of those and we will redact any information that would be deemed confidential prior to posting those explicit comments. But board members, we will give those comments to you and we will continue to review and learn from the suggestions and ideas that we are receiving or have received from both our parents as well as our staff. Our pandemic leadership team, which as you know, has been working since mid-March to lead our district through this crisis, developed the following guiding priorities which continue to drive our work. It is important to point out that all of this important work remains grounded in your Every Student Future Ready strategic plan. In fact, one of the things that I believe stands out about our work as we learn about plans that other districts are making across the country is that we are grounded in these principles and our strategic plan. And that has allowed everyone on our team to remain focused as we move through what has been a pretty difficult and challenging for basically everyone. The process guiding us today began back in March when Dr. Thompson assembled the pandemic leadership team. This group continues to meet on a regular basis to assure cohesive and coordinated planning of all elements of our crisis response, recovery, and our return to school. Our academic and operational task force has been working for more than a month to create the framework that I will share with you in just a few moments. This task force and the grade level subcommittees, which include members from elementary, middle, high school, and special schools, have engaged a broad array of representatives that include teachers, administrators, support staff, district leadership, and representatives from our employee unions. And finally, the feedback from the surveys that you just heard about representing broad parent and staff voices will continue to be vital as we move through this work. So I want to begin by emphasizing that today's purpose is not to share our final plan. We'll talk in a moment about the timeline that will guide our plan's finalization and the input from others which will impact our work. However, we felt it was of vital importance to let our families and our staff know that we are planning to begin the year. There are three scenarios that have been the focus of our academic task force work, which as we have learned over the last several months, are options just about every school district in the country are evaluating. On-site, which is also sometimes referred to as an open campus, brings back the majority of our staff and students to the physical school environment. Of course, guidelines would be in place to focus on health and safety. These guidelines may reflect changes to our lunch services, class periods, and structures within our classrooms. This option would include a soft launch to the year, which would include features like either half-days or some staggered schedule during that first week of school. Let me say again, this will likely include some sort of change to the schedule during the first week of school. We believe this is important because it will allow our students to transition back smoothly to the school environment while our staff spend the valuable time needed to reconnect, re-engage with our students. The blended or hybrid model would be critical so that we are prepared to pivot quickly in the event that a public health emergency causes us to incorporate a greater degree of home-based learning in order for social distancing and group-sized gathering limits to be met. Based on the consistent and overwhelming feedback received from staff and parents, we are developing plans on the scenario that would have students attending in shifts by alternating days with learning occurring when the student is in school and learning occurring when the student may be working remotely from home. And finally, the online model, which would be required should we have to discontinue in-person classes due to a community-wide public health emergency, much like what we had this spring. This is the model that we will quickly, that we did quickly employ this last spring when Governor Kelly ordered Kansas schools to close for the remainder of the school year. As you saw from both our staff and parent feedback, this is the least desirable option for all students. The scenario still has students tied to their base school, but learning exclusively online. However, we also know from feedback that there are some families who want to consider an exclusively online option for their child. This is why your action at the last meeting to support Education Imagine Academy is so important to our district. So thinking back to our guiding principles that I shared with you earlier, because we have been focused on enhancing a rigorous virtual learning system, Education Imagine Academy, as we also refer to now as EI Academy, provides a terrific option for families who desire stay-at-home online learning for their students. In this learning experience, EI Academy becomes the students' base school. It offers robust course offerings, including all core content classes as well as electives, including some that are pretty unique. Students in EI Academy are provided with technology and they have predominantly online interaction with their teachers, although there are some limited in-person requirements at designated times throughout the year. And because this question has been asked by some of our high school parents, I do want to add that according to Kaysha, a high school student will remain eligible for participation in athletics if he or she enrolls in at least one course at their base school, has a total of five classes, including one at that base school, and participates in athletics at the school that they would attend based upon their address. So it's important to note that today's update is based on what we know as of today. The framework I just shared with you is being developed based upon what we know today as well as what we're anticipating for tomorrow. And as we have seen numerous times through our planning process, the last several months, this virus is unpredictable and its impact on us is uncontrollable. It is important to keep in mind that our plans may have to change due to these circumstances beyond our control. We will be transparent, we will engage stakeholders as much as our work allows. And we need you to know, everyone, that things may change. But in tandem with that, I hope everyone also recognizes and keep in mind that this work is difficult for everyone. It's difficult for our students, our families, our staff, community, leaders, vendors, partners, and I could go on and on. It's just been flat-out difficult as well as stressful. There is not a person involved who isn't making the best possible decisions for our students and our staff, but we also know that there won't be a decision made upon where everyone is going to agree with. The stress of change on top of all the other stressors that come into play require us to be very aware of the social and emotional needs of our students and other stakeholders. And, so it brings me to this simple sentiment, that kindness matters. We have to go into this fall recognizing and accepting that this work is likely the most difficult challenge that any of us in education have ever or will ever face. We must seek to be kind, to value others, to expect that everyone involved will act with the best interest of our students in mind, and to know that none of us will be perfect. This will be the important lens through which we will consider all of our work for this fall, and I know you will continue to hear more from our team about this. So I'm sure everyone's wondering, what's next? There are a couple of things we need you to plan on in the upcoming weeks as we move forward to finalize our plan. The State Board of Education will discuss Kansas guidelines at its monthly meeting on July 14th and 15th. Based on State Board of Education feedback, the Kansas Department of Education is expected to release its final set of guidelines to Kansas educators on July 16th. In addition to the state guidelines, which will be guidance but not necessarily requirements as we have been told, there are numerous other educational and health experts who are providing their own best practice suggestions. And I'll tell you, not all of them are aligned. We will continue to take in all of the data, consider a vast array of expert resources, and make the same kind of reasoned decisions that have been our hallmark since March when we issued our first guidance to staff about what we now know as COVID-19. Our intention is to release our Future Ready Return to School Plan on Monday, July 20th. We recognize fully that this may make planning difficult for leaders, staff, and our families, and for this, we do regret, but we've been told loud and clear that folks don't want us changing frequently and confusing everyone about plans. So we are releasing this framework now so families know that we are planning for a return to campus in August, but also know that we may have some alternating schedule again that first week for that soft launch to ease everyone back into the school year. When we release our plan on July 20th, that plan will speak to many of the questions that we know families will have regarding transportation, food service, enrollment, school start, before and after-school programs, and so many other details. So our intent is to release a summary document and provide additional details online so that parents can access the updates that are most relevant to their family situation. The framework that we are releasing today will allow families to consider what they feel is best for their child, and they can evaluate whether they want to enroll their child in our traditional school environment or whether they want to consider 100% online learning with our Education Imagine Academy virtual school. All this said, I can't say enough that plans may change based upon factors out of our control. Communication is going to be essential and we will continue focusing on all of the key channels that our survey tells us are important to our stakeholders. And so as I close and prepare to take your questions, I want to summarize as I conclude. Safety of students, staff, and family is key. Many competing factors will be considered as we finalize our district plan. Additionally, in the shorter term and in the interest of safety for all involved, our team is evaluating the status of our late-July in-person commencement ceremonies. We will be consulting with facility host and public health officials this week, and we will release a final decision on the status of these events by the end of the week. We also consider all information available and make well-reasoned decisions that are focused on safety first. Second, significant stakeholder feedback has helped to shape this plan. Third, we are focused on opening school on-site with modifications in August, but we are also developing a set of plans that will allow us to pivot as public health conditions dictate. Flexibility is key. Fourth, our Future Ready Return to School Plan will be finalized and shared publicly on Monday, July 20th. And finally, this work has been and will continue to be difficult. We won't be perfect, say that again, we won't be perfect during this process, but we must stick together to make the best possible decisions to support our students, our staff, our families. And then one final thing I would share with stakeholders is that if you have questions about the information that I've shared today and our final planning stages leading up to July 20th, please share your questions at info@usd259.net. All general questions will end up in a frequently asked question document, which will be viewable on our WPS return website, and families with direct or immediate questions, excuse me, immediate questions will be connected with a district team member who can help them. And on that note, I welcome your questions, comments, suggestions, feedback. Thank you.
Mike? I beg your pardon, Ron. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. I was just wanting to find out how many, the soft launch, how many days will that be for the soft launch?
So that is still in the planning. What we are looking at is, you know, really, how many days might it take for us to look at how we assess students' social-emotional health coming in? It's not final, but I would say we are looking at the first week, no more to two.
So one to two weeks?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, as far as the soft launch, so what exactly will be occurring during that time? Are teachers going to be evaluating the number of students they have, taking temperature, spacing?
All of those things are still in the planning stage that we would be able to share when we release the final, final plan on July 20th, what we want our staff and students and families What we want our staff and students and families to be aware of is that we know there's going to be some adjustments, some changes to that first week or so of school, different than what it has looked like in recent years. And so, we want people to be aware of that so they can begin to plan and prepare for that, and then we will be able to answer those questions and explain exactly what that's going to look like for everyone when the plan is released on the 20th.
Okay, thank you.
Ben?
Yes, I, one stakeholder group that I want to make sure is acknowledged as we move forward, that I got feedback on in March, was that our staff that have children in the district. I know, I heard some personal stories of some staff that had to juggle a lot, especially with professional learning versus, you know, teaching their own kids versus teaching their classrooms. And I know, I encourage our staff to enroll kids in our district, and I don't want to make that an additional burden as we shift into maybe a hybrid mode. The other thing I wanted to say is, this is just a reminder again of how our, our school district is a microcosm of our larger community. And so, as we make good choices in our buildings, I think it's important yet again to remind our community to make good choices in terms of following public health guidelines and everything like that. And I want to acknowledge and thank the people out in our community that are doing the right things as we move forward.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I'm gonna, looking at this, if we go to, I don't have my notes in front of me, Mike stole my computer. The regular school that we're talking about, and 20%, it looks like is about a number average that would be virtual. What does that do to our busing percentage, and will that cost us money because it drops our numbers below, or does it drop our numbers below the percentage figured in the last contract?
What I will tell you is that everything, all of our contracts and things, we are looking at to be able to make adjustments, if we can, to any contract, whether it be transportation, whether it be software, whatever it is. And as you know, our new contracts, we've built that flexibility inside of it. If there are contracts that were beyond that time when you recommended that we have some flexibility in it, we'd have to take each contract step by, I mean, you know, one by one. But, so today, we don't have an answer for you as it relates to the impact it would have on transportation, but as we find out what the desires are of our families, then we'll have a better idea of what that will look like, and then we'll be able to answer that question.
My other question's on, if we go to alternating days, one of the concerns that I had on that was is, if we do, how would that look? Would that be a Monday, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, or do we even have a good guess at this time?
Well, although we are planning for on-site, that open campus, we want to have plans developed for hybrid and remote in the event we ever have to pivot to one of those. So, the feedback from our surveys indicated, you know, that morning, afternoon, which we know that won't work, but to the alternating days, an example, doesn't mean it would be this, but an example could look like a group, or half of our students tend in the building on Monday, Tuesday, and then they receive their remote learning the rest of the week. Flip, Wednesday, or Thursday, Friday could be the other half of the district attend, and they would receive their remote learning on those alternate days. And then we would use Wednesday for days such as thoroughly cleaning our buildings, professional development for our staff, and still perhaps having some students that may need additional time face-to-face with us in the building.
Okay, because one of the reasons that I ask that question is, is like this week, July 4th is on the 3rd, which is a Friday, which would be a school day, which mean half our kids wouldn't be in school, but half our kids would be in school. And so, a lot of the Mondays go that way. Would we look at eliminating a lot of the Monday holidays and, so that we don't screw up the schedule, or how would we go about that?
We would definitely need to look at our school calendar to see if there were holidays that impacted equity in students receiving services face-to-face and, and perhaps make some adjustments, but again, we will have that plan ready on the back burner so that we're prepared if we need to pivot at any moment.
Well, I think that the live school is the best way to go, and, you know, hopefully the district gets behind that, and the parents get behind that, because it'll be the easiest for us and be able to do a better job than to have to, it seems to me, on any of the other options that we would have.
Well, the feedback from both our staff, as well as our families, indicated that that's what they want with the implementation of those health and safety guidelines that we have many folks working on and preparing, and so that's what we will continue to plan for and look forward to being able to share that full plan on July 20th.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I just want to follow up a little bit on what Mike said. We really are looking at bringing our kids back in one way or another, either through a hybrid model or having them back on campus, depending on what happens with the COVID, correct?
We are planning for, yes, to bring our students back physically to the building with what's called the on-site or open campus, and we are going to also make sure our families are aware that there is a 100% virtual online opportunity for those that may not be ready, and we are planning some of these other scenarios if we need to use them as well in the future.
Because we don't really, I mean, even this week, things have changed.
Exactly.
And as we move on into the summer, it will continue to do that. So, we're trying to develop a way to get kids back in the school, the safest way we can do that. Is that a fair statement?
That is 100% accurate.
Okay. And then, but as an alternative, we will have our online program up and ready to go so that if we have parents who don't feel comfortable bringing their kids back to the physical buildings, they can choose that.
That is correct.
All right. Then, as we're looking at these plans, and I appreciate very much having these surveys done, I think there's a wealth of knowledge in this. I've looked through them and am impressed with the thought that parents and staff have put into this. And, and that's a good guide for us because it's pretty clear, particularly our staff is looking at the safety issue and looking at a hybrid as a possibility.
Yes.
Okay. And so, we will, as we move through the next two, three weeks, be settling on either open campus or hybrid model. We probably will not have both?
So, we are focusing our planning around the on-campus with the modifications that we need to implement in our buildings for safety and health. And, I mean, that's the plan we're moving forward with as our primary plan, but as information continues that we're provided, or if there are other public health concerns that we need to look at making some changes, such as offering additional options, then we will be prepared to do that as well.
Okay.
And we have to remember too, that we have to get guidance from KSDE. So, while we have these ideas and we think that we are moving in the right direction, we still have to make sure that we are in alignment with what KSDE has asked us to do. So, any adjustments, any more meat on the bones, per se, will all come from what we hear from KSDE.
And that's an excellent point, thank you for reminding us, because we aren't in this all by ourselves. Our state is giving us guidance, it's just, and that's the reason for that July 20th date, even though that seems a little late. I am assuming that we will develop guidelines as a district to give to our staff, and when our staff physically comes back in the very first part of August, they will make it real for their students, because it may physically look a little bit differently in how they, but the guidelines will be the same for every building, is that correct?
That is correct, and so that's another reason why a soft launch is important, because it's going to take time for us to make sure that our staff are fully aware of these new guidelines and practices that we need to follow, that are going to be consistent across our system, and then, not only that our staff know, but then our staff have the, be able to provide that information to our students during this ease back into the school year, because it is going to look different.
You are doing yeoman's work. You're looking at three different reinventions of school, so thank you and to your team, thank you so very much for the work that you've put in on this.
Well, I will say, our system as a whole has pretty amazing, been pretty amazing during this process because it is an engagement of folks from across all departments, it's folks from all levels within the system, it is representatives from our unions, employee unions, both of them, and so it's been lots of people doing lots of brain power to do what we believe is in the best interest of our students.
Very good. Stan?
A point of clarification first. Dr. Mike, do we still need to say our names before we speak? Or is this, since this now, we have a live process, we don't have to do that?
Tom, can you answer that question, please? Can you repeat it?
Yes. I was wondering if we still need to say our name before we speak each time? Now that we're live and on a live program, I didn't know if we still need to do that or not.
Technically, you still do because you have a listening audience that's not here.
Tom, you're gonna have to come down because they're.
Yeah, they can't, they can't hear you.
You're saying you want the community to hear your response.
You can use Ben's, yeah.
Technically, you do because the live audience is not here.
Okay.
So, the same rules apply, applied before, and you should announce your name when you take a motion or speak.
Okay. Stan Reesert, District 4. I was actually going to try to do a summary, but Cheryl did a great job on it. I think the only thing I would add is, it's important to note, it was very nice to see that our parents and our staff are almost saying the exact same thing and are on the exact same page. And just to reemphasize too, that we will be prepared to help students who, out of concern, if like the numbers keep spiking, if they, if parents are out there concerned about sending their child onsite, because that is our focus, we're gonna try to do that and be prepared to pivot. But if we do have parents out there, or families out there, or students themselves who are concerned about what's happening, we are prepared to help them shift to online learning, and I was just gonna emphasize that one last time.
Yes. Our Education Imagine Academy will be ready for any student, family that is interested in 100% virtual learning, and so that is definitely an option for any family that may not be ready to attend on-site learning this fall.
Dr. Open, could you tell us what grade levels those are, and if a parent was interested in wanting to explore and look at what's available there, what would they do?
Thank you for bringing that up. Our EI Academy is K through 12. It is, it has a page on our district website, so anyone interested in learning more about Education Imagine Academy can go to usd259.org, and I don't know the.
Slash EI Academy.
USD259.org/EIAcademy, or just go to the landing page and learn more about it. There is an opportunity to even go ahead and let us know if you have interest so that we can reach out and be prepared to answer any questions that you might have, but it is K through 12. It is going to have a robust variety of exploratory courses for students, and so I encourage families to check it out.
Mike?
Cheryl?
Okay. Ernestine?
I'm assuming, I don't know if this works, is it?
Yeah, and go ahead and say your name first.
I'm Ernestine Crable of District 3. I'm assuming that the rules that the state had at one point about so many hours of seat time has long since passed, and that our real issue is, are they learning things, not how many hours they're sitting on a chair in a classroom?
Well, at this time, we still are required to meet the minimum hours of attendance. That has not changed. However, you know, one of the things that, that our online learning experience does allow is for students to demonstrate mastery and move on, so there is some self-pacing there. But, you know, that's also what we're trying to do in all of our classrooms with our SRG, with our Standards Reference Grading.
Right.
It's not about a particular assessment or completing certain assignments, or going through a textbook from page 1 through 500, it's about.
Or sitting on a chair 60 hours.
Yes, it's about allowing students to show how they have mastered skills and standards, and so our EI Academy is one opportunity for that to happen.
The question had to do with, that if we do the online, I mean, the hybrid portion, that those hours that they're doing at home, we're not going to have to measure that because we're really checking, did the student accomplish, master a particular competency?
We're checking to see if students have mastered a certain level of competency, yet we also do have some accountability pieces that we are still requiring.
Right, attendance, but, but I'm just saying that, like, if one student can accomplish it in two hours and another student takes four hours, it's not a matter of measuring as to which one is going to be finished at the end. They're both, once they've accomplished their goals. The issue isn't how many time, hours they've spent in a room.
Right. Most definitely, our goal is competency-based mastery. We want our students to be able to demonstrate that they have mastered a skill, and we know, anyone who's worked around kids know that not everyone learns at the same time, at the same moment, and so it's important that we provide or set up our instructions so students are able to demonstrate that.
And Ernestine, while we, while this is what we believe, we also have to be accountable to KSDE.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if KSDE has gotten.
We have not received that guidance yet, so it's hard for us to say yea or nay. What we do know is that those things will be in that, rumor mill has it, it's a thousand pages of things that we'll have to, and I'm not exaggerating, pages that we'll have to decipher through to get that answer. Even if we pivot to hybrid, there will be specific guidelines that will be in place for the accountability piece for that.
Well, I'm having to be a little amused that, but I'm delighted the school district had come, the 40 years that the metros existed, they were competency-based entirely, and sometimes we had this situation where a student was, accomplished it a lot, but we had to have a minimum of 60 hours of seat time, and so they had, we, it was okay, because we could then enhance and give them more, and they would did, but the students would say, but I've accomplished it all, I've done it. But it is, it is a wonderful way, and it's about time that, that we got to the business in which that it is how much they've learned and what they've completed as competencies, not on how many hours they've spent sitting in a classroom.
And Ms. Crable, we are definitely hopeful that as we move through this, that some of these things that are requirements from our KSDE, as they learn, they have been being flexible too, and learning and listening to the field, and so as we continue to serve on those teams moving forward, the work of the state, we will definitely continue to carry that water.
Cheryl Logan, I, I just have one more question, and this is just basically for the public, because we have been purchasing technology for all of our students in the district. Can you address that a little bit? Because if we go with a hybrid or. the public, because we have been purchasing technology for all of our students in the district. Can you address that a little bit? Because if we go with a hybrid, or if we go with a remote learning, our kids are gonna have to have computers that are internet accessible. Would you speak to that just for a moment, please?
Most definitely. One of the things that we are extremely proud and grateful to you at our last, from our last meeting, was the approval for the purchase of the devices that you approved at the last meeting, $24 million. And that is being used to purchase devices for all of our 6th through 12th grade students. So all of our 6th through 12th grade students will receive a brand-new device. And then, devices that we currently have available within our system at the secondary level, we will use them to provide to all of our elementary students. So all of our students will have a personal device that we will begin to use this fall, even if we're in onsite, because what's important is that we are starting off preparing our students and providing professional development for our staff to begin to use those technology tools ongoing, even in our classrooms. In the event we have to make a pivot, our students and our staff are accustomed to receiving instruction, delivering instruction via our technology devices, so that we would be prepared to either implement a hybrid or a remote online process for all of our students in the future.
I have a question. I'm sorry, my gadget isn't working here too. Did I hear you say that, so that it'll be 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, not just 6th and high school?
For...
New, new purchase?
Right. We'll have the devices for all of our secondary.
Okay, thank you. I hadn't understood that.
Yes, Ben Blankley, District 1. I was looking through the, the details of the staff survey, and I know we've said that, you know, regardless of what we do, there's gonna be someone that doesn't like what we're doing. But I also think it's important to acknowledge that 14% of the, our staff that responded to the survey said they wouldn't support an open campus. And so, and that's like one out of seven of our staff. So I'm wondering, in, in, you know, in the interim planning period, as we develop this, we should probably have some sort of a, a component of it for those staff members who, for whatever reason, don't feel comfortable returning to the classroom as normal, either perhaps getting out of contract early without penalty, if that's possible, or being like first in line to be an EI instructor, if their certification allows for it. I guess, it's not really a question again.
Sure. I, I, what I will tell you is that Mr. Huspeth, he's not here today, because he's probably working on that as we speak. We do have a team that is working very closely with KSDE and the legal team and the folks that give advice and guidance in those areas. And so I am positive that those things will also be in place for us to know how to walk forward from KSDE as well. And we also, just so that you're aware, we're giving probably a page or two of policies that KSDE now has brought forth to say, as we transition into next year, these are some additional policies and things that you, or adjustments that should be looked at as you continue to move forward. So we'll have, and, and HR was included in there as well. So we will begin to take a look at what KSDE and the legal team are advising there and make adjustments.
Awesome, thank you.
Ernestine, did you... Julie, we haven't heard from you, and I certainly don't want to stop this discussion until you have a chance to speak if you want to.
I'm, I'm still here, I'm taking everything in, but I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you didn't. I think...
Yeah, I'm here too, I appreciate it.
I think that ends the questions that we have. Great presentation and lots of work still ahead. So we will certainly stay engaged with, as you learn more from the state and, and what we end up deciding to do, but it's going to be an interesting year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please. Okay, we're, we're gonna take just a, a brief pause while we adjust some technology. We're pausing. I just want to reiterate that July the 20th is going to be the date when the school district will be bringing out what plan we're gonna use in the fall, and some of the details, more will be available on the website for parents. Then the work is really gonna go into high gear as we begin the implementation of whatever plan is decided on for fall. For parents, they need to begin to look at, do they want their student to come back to the schools? Are they more interested in having it as a, as an offline, I mean, not coming back to the schools, but rather going into our academy for online learning? So parents will have some choices, and we certainly want you to stay tuned and refocused and watch that July 20th date, because that's gonna be a big one for the district. Do you want to add anything, Superintendent?
No, thank you.
Okay, I think we are ready. Next item.